Okay, I can hear you now.
Oh, hey, I'm speaking to the queen. I'm speaking to uh the princess, the president. Yo, you could be anything you wanna be.
That's what the ancestors said. That's what the ancestors said.
And you answered the call.
Yes, I did.
Ladies and gentlemen, Nikia. Nikia Jean Charles, not, not John Charles G.
You can say John. I mean, it's Haitian Creole, so folks do say John too.
People who don't know John say Jean. And the people, and, and the people, okay, and the people who do know John say John, and they also eat John John. Okay, this, this is a book and a movie in the making.
It is.
One hundred years from now, you're gonna be on the twenty dollar bill.
Oh, I mean, I look up to her, but nah, she might still be on there. She definitely will still.
A hundred year, you'll probably be on the new, the thousand dollar bill.
Oh, thank you.
Hey, you, you, you be on a thousand dollar bill, who knows? Once again, Nikia Jean Charles or Nikia John Charles, if you really know what you really know.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? Uh? In the past month, when I ask you a question, we do have some tough questions that you're a politician. In the past month, have you eaten Labbulie?
No, I haven't. I haven't. I haven't. I'm not gonna front with you. I haven't.
Now, now you want it, right now?
My mother told me to the other day, but I didn't. For one of the Sunday dishes, but I'm always running on a busy schedule, so I need my food quick.
Let, let me talk about a schedule. I wanted to schedule a meeting with you. And, and it was so interesting. I, I don't wanna forget her name, but uh, the woman I spoke to Fiona.
Yes.
That's the name?
Campaign manager, yep, Fiona Fee.
Yeah, so she said, alright, so I'll take the information and then I'll get back to you because uh, she's in class right now.
I, okay.
I forgot, she's, she's a high school senior.
I do get calls throughout the day while I'm in school. I'm not gonna lie. That's why I put my phone on do not disturb now.
What does your principal say?
I mean, they know, they know that I'm running for office probably by now, cuz I know during our February rate was, which was last week. Oh, and so like yesterday, I done, they had us do like a Black History Month presentation. And it wasn't no cockiness or anything. I just wanted to take a time to reflect on what I've done in the past, so I was like, I'm gonna just do it on me. Um, and a bunch of kids did on themselves too for Black History Month and just looking like a, like our black resistance. And I wrote about myself and what I'm doing in the community. Um, and it just, I, I looked at myself and I was like, wow, this is kinda great. And so they had me present it and they're like, wow, can you present it to the other blocks too? So I talked about the community fridge. Um, and I talked about how I'm basically running and I guess that was how they found out cuz I'm not even gonna lie. I was looking at the Instagram followers um, yesterday, and I know teachers got a group chat cuz it was like three of my teachers that followed me all at once.
You, you're gonna remember your teachers' names when they start putting money in their campaign.
Right, right, right.
Uh, they go, they go end up putting money in the campaign, and hopefully when they see that you're talking to the chief Kahuna. They're gonna say, oh, I didn't know that you knew him. You know who that guy is? He's super famous. Do you know that I have the most listened to podcast of the twenty second century?
Wow, period. You see, this is what our ancestors would love to see.
I said twenty second century.
Wow, you tried to play me there. You tried to play me.
Hey, but guess what? I called it first, so when it happens.
I mean, you're manifesting it.
I'm not even gonna be here, but when it happens, whoever says it first, it's a na 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 na. A hundred years ago, this other guy said it already. You're not the number one of the twenty second century. So I got whoever's trying to be first.
Wow, yep, they're gonna be still listening to you.
Yeah, yeah, so Nikia, uh, Nikia John Charles. When you see it in writing, it says Nikia Jean Charles, it just says it. Just, if you, if you see her anywhere in person, which you'll see her, to say to her, hi Nikia John Charles, um, or just Nikia. Eighteen years old, you're not gonna be nineteen anytime soon, are you?
No, I turned nineteen in September, actually.
Goodness, Virgo's in the house?
Yes, you're Virgo too?
September fifth.
Ooh, okay, I'm September twenty first. So I was about to be, I was about to be another one.
Ain't you glad you ain't only, never mind. Okay, so you're in high school, senior in high school. What's the name of the school you're in?
I go to Cathedral High School in the South End.
Okay, my wife grew up in the South End. Her father still lives there right now. So you're at Cathedral High School, only some of your friends know you're running. The whole school doesn't know yet.
Most of the school, well. My whole senior class definitely knows.
Go ahead.
My senior class definitely knows. Junior class, most definitely they know too cuz they're on social media too. For sophomores, some of them, cuz I did present while some sophomores were in the classroom too. But I don't know about the younger grades. I don't know about the younger grades, but definitely all the upperclassmen know.
So your thing is, I ain't running for no, no class president. Uh, you know what? I'm gonna regulate the whole school. I'm running for city council.
Right, right.
You are, again, I didn't even, I don't know if I mentioned District Four is what you're running for.
Right, District Four has answered my home.
What morning did you wake up and decide, that's it, no cartoons, no Labbulie? No cereal. I'm gonna devise a plan to run for District Four. Because I need to be the representative of District Four. I need to be the city council. What motivated you to just do it? To say, I wanna do this?
To be honest with you, I thought about it during September throughout and throughout the summer. Cuz right after, I don't know if you remember, right after they had voted on the budget. Um, in terms of how the budget would look like for this year. And I was just, like a lot of youth organizers and myself, since we already doing that community work um, throughout the whole summer in terms of protests. We are already thinking about like, who else is gonna make the change if nobody else is gonna do it in office, right? Some of, some, there was some elected officials that did vote um, to not pass that budget, and there were some that did. In terms of the budget that we have right now. And we were just, there was a lot of us that was just disappointed with the outcome, and we were just fed. But until September, I was like, you know what? Maybe I should do it. Then I stopped a little. I started, I started playing games with myself. But I created the Matapan Community Fridge throughout that time, which I'm very proud of. And then I was like, honestly, change really can't wait in this community. Like, I saw the people in my community, we usually hold um, food drives and stuff, and I'd talk to them sometimes. And I'm like, yo, there definitely needs to be more resources brought to Districts Four. Um, if not now, then when? Like, and tha- that's the generation that I, that I've been communicating with. We're all like, if not now, then when? So that's why I also had the motto of my um, campaign to be changes on the horizon. Cuz if not now, then when? We're gonna do this right now. Change is coming soon. The next generation deserves it. Who's gonna wait? Like, who's gonna wait?
So, now, the rea- the reason why I really reached out is, one, there's a young lady running. That means she's certainly serious. And two, if she's running at eighteen, she's not going anywhere. So for thirty, forty, fifty years, we're gonna hear your name.
Right, no, I'm, I've definitely, even at a young age when I started community organizing, I was, I was on their backs. Like, because I, I went to school in, um, in Cathedral, which is in the South End. I would take, I would get on the SL four, SL five to downtown. I'd either be on my way to City Hall, or I'd be on my way to State House. Mostly, it was mostly the State House. I was, I was on their backs.
Go there and just in, 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 in talk your stuff?
Yeah, cuz we're, I don't know if you remember back, it was my freshman year of high school. Nobody really wanted to support the education bill around fully funding our schools, the Student Opportunity Act. And so freshman year, it was me and a few organizers from St. Stevens Youth Programs, loved, loved them to death. Um, and we started organizing with some of the students with Beja and BSAC. And we were like, yo, we need to get our schools fully funded in terms of um, public school budgets, since it wasn't, it was like twenty, over twenty seven years that it wasn't um, updated. So we went every day, be on their backs, asked them, can you sign on to this legislation? Are you in support of this legislation? That Sonya Chain Diaz had put in place. And ever since then, I was, I was on their backs. I wanted to create um, an actual service day with my school there. And so I was, I was there every day after school, but unfortunately with the pandemic that came along. Um, we couldn't do so, but yeah. As I, I'm always keeping our, our legislators accountable.
Do you think some of those legislators are so glad that the pandemic is here, so you ain't gotta come?
Oh, yeah, definitely, definitely, definitely. They don't get us knocking on their doors anymore.
Now, when you were knocking, would they say something like, we're in a meeting right now, or would they try to turn you away?
Well, we would call them sometimes too. I remember, don't let my teachers hear this, but sometimes I would call, I would call them in class. I would call them in class to see if they'll be there when I get to school, cuz you know, some of them, they just go on vacation. Or they're just like, we're having, we're not in session right now. And so I just called them to make sure that they're there, they're there when I get there. Sometimes they would be like, no, they're not here right now, but when I get there, they would be there.
So wait a minute, you going up in there with that whole New Year's Eve. I mean, New Year's Day Haiti style. The real New Year, you're going in there like that, like, yo, Akkouda Ta, you going to sign? You are going to sign. And so, so the bill was written by? So she got your back?
I'm not gonna say that, yeah, you know, you can't.
Did, did she write a bill that you wanted, or do you want something added to the bill or taken away from it?
I mean, def- we were in support of the bill, since at the end of the day, it would support our schools.
That, that's what I mean by she got your back. She wrote a bill and you wanted everybody to sign off on it. Alright, so you, you begin your protest, obviously like most. I don't wanna say kids. You began your protest, obviously like a whole lot of young people. Four or five, it's bedtime, you want something to eat?
I do. I was like, I'm not, even my volleyball teacher would get mad at me. I mean, not coach, um, not teacher, not, but I'm a coach. She would get mad and say, I love her dad, Coach Haley, but she would be like, where are you going? And I would be like, I can't come to practice today. I'm going to the State House. And then she'd be like, I was, okay, and even with, last year was difficult cuz I was working, I was working a job. Then I had volleyball practice, and then I also had community organizing. And I always prioritize community organizing, I think, of all of them. Um, but I came to the games, I came to some, most of the practices. She really let me get away, I'm not even gonna hold you. But um, at the end of the day, I was like, I'm gonna be, I'm always gonna prioritize my community number one, and in terms of the legislation that we need to get passed. That was just, that's my memo.
Well, well, okay, what I, what I meant by the first question was, when you were four years old, five years old, and it was time for bed. Did you make up a story of, I'm hungry, just to stay up?
No, actually. Honestly, I can't even remember till that time, not for, four year, five, or, yeah.
When did you have the protest spirit inside of you? Period.
It started, I'm not even gonna hold you, when I was in the fourth grade, when they tried to shut down the Laura Mills Library. Those, cuz like, all the kids, I went to St. John, it's an all call St. John Paul Second Catholic Academy in Laura Mills. I went there, and almost all of us kids, we, we used to always go to the library after school, and they wanted to shut it down. So that, that little tiny spike, I guess it, it just never left me, cuz we are always going to the community meetings and trying to make sure that they didn't shut down the library. And so I guess the spike just like, it, it rose up and it wanted to explode when I was around in middle school and high school. Um, so when I was around like eighth grade, um, ninth grade, that's when it just sparked. It was like, nah, you need to community organize now.
So, so now, the District Four thing comes about a little after you, uh, well, no, not a little after, cuz you got your, you, the national, the National Walkout, Parkland shootings. Were you a part of that?
For the National Walkout, you know what worked best? We had vacation, but either way, I was gonna, I was gonna walk out. For Cathedral, we had vacation, um, our March vacation. But what we did, what I did that day with St. Stevens Youth Organizers. Um, we also had some organizers from different towns of Mass, some in Springfield. We went to our neighbors out in, like our, our neighbors out in Springfield. We went to Smith and Wesson. We didn't go to State House when they had. Went to Smith and Wesson.
Wesson, not the rappers?
No, we went to Smith and Wesson, and we did monthly actions there every month.
Wait, wait a minute. You took a school fight, a school ba- a backyard school fight? To a real gun factory?
Yes, look it up. We, we did that.
You went to Smith and Wesson, the people who make the guns? Ladies and gentlemen, Nikia John Charles went to the people who made the guns. If she's city council, she's going to people's faces.
Right, definitely. I'm gonna show up.
You ain't scared?
No, no, my ancestors weren't scared. They had real knives and guns in front of them. They weren't scared. Why am I supposed to be scared? If anybody wants to test me, they can, they can test my ancestors, my religion. I, I'm Ca- I'm Catholic, by the way, and then they can test his Bible.
But hold on. So, so, so the whole family is, is behind, when you said you wanted to do this, what did your mother, what did your parents say?
Oh, they definitely questioned it. My mother was.
Okay, because I was gonna say, I was gonna tell you exactly what they said.
No, they definitely, it took, it's, it took them a week, I guess, to get used to the fact. I told them I was doing it. When I tell them things, they're like, okay, I know you're already gonna do it, but it just takes them a while to like consume it too. Um, and so they're like, wow, you're really doing this. And then I had other fam- I told other family members about it, and so they called my mom back. And they called my, my grandma's the initial um, decision maker in the family. She, she has. Yeah, everybody listens to her. She's the queen of everything. And so they're talking to her about it. They convinced her finally. Cuz she was like, um, hello Nikia, do you not see your age? And plus, growing up in Haiti, you know how, since she migrated here, growing up in Haiti, they were going through stuff too, in terms of their government. She was scared for me, um, also, to be honest with you. She was scared. She's scared of um, what happens to protesters out in Haiti with politics over there, cuz they get kidnapped, they get killed. And she's, she was scared, even at when I started community organizing, at like fourteen, she was scared too back then. But she grew up with the fact, um, that like, she knows that I'm not gonna stop. She knows that I, I always pressure her about like, yo, what would the ancestors do? And she's, she just sits there quiet. She folds her eyes and she looks at me. So that's how I always went about like, talking to her in terms of making decisions for my future. And she's always, she's been supportive ever since, especially with the community fridge. She loved that. She was like, yo, you're doing the work.
That's good. Well, if you ever do anything in Haiti, just, just roll with Wyclef, cuz Wyclef roll with the Barakat Boys. Do you know anything about Barakat Crew?
No, I don't think so. I haven't met them yet.
Who'll find out? So, so, alright, so somebody in your family did say, you know they would question you. If you, if you do this, if you run for this office, they're going to question you. And you said, no, no, don't worry about it. This is a new day. I'm not scared. I'm gonna do this. You convince them you ain't scared. They're seeing that people are behind you and galvanized, and you know what it is you want. You, you actually have a platform already, you know. We went on your page and the pla- I was like.
When I tell you, black people, they come with the bag. They come ready. And especially at a young age, I know people are gonna overlook me. I know people are gonna say that, does she know what she's doing? But maybe aside. I came with my platform for sure, cuz I wanted folks to know that I was serious about what I'm doing. I've always been serious about what I wanted to do in the community. And I wanted folks to be reassured and to see my platforms when I launched, so.
So you think, i- isn't it crazy that at one point in our time in history, it was a black thing, a white thing, an Irish thing? Now it's a, that person's too young, they don't know what they're doing.
Yeah, I was like, aren't you supportive of black people in general? Nah. Where, no man can be left, left behind. So I'm like, if I, my age shouldn't be a problem. At the end of the day, I'm still fighting for my community, right?
So, so, you come up with all these ideas.
Not only me, my community, my community.
Yeah, well, you, so you asked the community, what is it that you want me to run on before you even decide to run? Where, where'd you, what I'm saying is, where did you get your ideas for your issues and platform tha- that you were gonna stand on? Where, where did you first get that?
So for our public peace platform, right, that's already been through like the community organizing work, that most of it's basically from community organizing work. I talked to some of the organizers that I've been with and done the work with, and they're like, you should add this in, this in, you don't wanna leave um, this part. And it, we added like the, there's always things to add to the um, to our platforms, by the way, just for folks to know. We added the dismantled, the school confinement, confinement pipeline, and we wanna make sure that we are addressing what's going on in our schools. We wanna make sure that we're having um, access to youth jobs. And there's so much, I know you didn't wanna talk about that much of the politics. But in terms of the imagined food abundance, right, we're also re- reimagining the way that we talk about our policies, the way that we, we um, state our policies. In terms of how can we bring more resources to the community, cuz I really wanted to run a platform and a campaign specifically on reimagination, community. Accessibility and um, accountability. So that's how I ran my platform. And with the reimagined food abundance, it came from the level like, yo, we cannot live without food. We need food in our communities. We need the healthy forms of food. And it also came from the community fridge network that I'm also in, in terms like my support system. They're there for me. Mad folks that also have been doing the community food abundance, and we're actually about to update it. We're about to speak with folks from um, Matapan Food and Fitness to see what they can add on to what's needed. Cuz I also wanna, I was looking into like forms of, like the medical part around food, imagined food abundance and diabetes, problems of that nature. How can we address that in our platform? And then I also wanted to be transparent. That's why we created the transparency and accountability platform. Cuz I want folks to have like, a better connection with our government, cuz we, there's like, there's literally a break between our community and our government. And what's being, what's happening, right? And as you know, just the other day, there was a legislation for um, transparency and accountability that happened in the State House. So I really want that to, for us community members to be able to talk with our policymakers and be a part of the discussion when we're making those policies.
Okay, and, and in most of those cases where, where the, the government and the community interconnects. In most of those cases, as li- like, uh, let's say, where the governor is concerned. And, and some other people, the mayor, some of those cases, they have community liaisons. Are you proposing that the uh, the city councils, uh, both at large and regular city councils? Are you proposing that they have community lia- liaisons? Are you proposing that they roll up their sleeves and get out in the community to, to see and hear what the community is wanting and desired?
I'm talking both. Yeah, definitely. I'm open to all forms of being able to talk with our community members. Our commu- our policymakers should always be in our community meetings. That's number one. That's like, how are you supposed to know what your community wants if you're not even, even in their community meetings? Um, and I, like, I don't know if you know, but I'm already in the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council. And so I've always been connected to what's going on in our community in terms of the housing that's being created. And I've also just wanted that, I wanted to know, I wanted to see what's transparent in our community and what's going on. If any policymaker thinks different, that they shouldn't be in those commu- meetings, we should rethink if they should be in office. And so I wanna create, I wanna create different ways and different platforms that people can connect to us, right? We're talking about our youth. They're on social media all the time. There should be easy access for them to connect to us. Send a, a quick TM. Send a way that you can have lives on your Instagram or social medias to update folks. That should be our, our norms, to make sure that we're accessible to folks. And then for our seniors, literally pull up to their churches, pull up to the mass, and try to connect with them. It shouldn't just be only when you're running your campaign or running an election. I go to my masses all the time. Um, not that much because of COVID, but I'm free to open and talk to anybody in terms of who's in my community and who's with our elders or our younger folks. Cuz I wanna run an intergenerational campaign.
Well, I'm from another generation, and when I inboxed you all and was like, hey, I would love to do an interview. You personally sent the inbox back and was like, first of all, old man, I don't know who you are. Your show looks like. You're on the board, you're, you're on a Matapan Council, uh, Ben Pan?
Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council.
Greater, okay, and how long you have you been on that council?
I actually was elected last year, so last February I was elected. Seventeen, I was the youngest one. Seventeen with the highest votes actually. Let me, let me get my points in. Mm-hmm, I did a lot of outreach in terms of like, trying to get folks to vote, cuz you had to get a, um, your community role for you in order to get on your, on the, on the, um, board.
Okay, so you, oh, I don't know what to say.
When I tell folks, I've been doing this community work, and I mean it, when I say I do this community work.
Yeah, cuz some people never like, I said, yeah, can't wait to talk to Nikia, um, Jean. Nikia Jean Charles, and it's like, about what? Have you seen her? Have you seen her website? I was like, yeah, yeah, they're like, what struggles? I said, everybody has struggles. I said, the things that these kids see, I said, the tear gas that, that people uh, had to experience when they were marching for George Floyd. These young people have seen a whole lot worse than what we've seen. But, so I'm gonna ask you, what struggles?
What struggles? Well, when I, when I put out my press release, I had also said that I was a survivor. One, I see as a survivor as a survivor of white supremacy, number one, cuz it's rooted into every, it's rooted into all, all the evilness. I just wanted to take a moment. I didn't wanna cry or anything. This is a, a community based thing. Um, I have, I am a survivor of gun violence. Um, I've, there's been loved ones in my family and also friends that have unfortunately passed away due to gun violence, um, which I hold deep in my heart. And there, there's other forms of survivorship that I also am connected to, but I, I don't think now's the time to um, speak upon, upon those. But I'm definitely com- committed to trying to make change for our communities. And so when I said I went through the circles, I went through the struggles of our education system. I went through struggles of our, um, the over policing in our communities. As a little kid, literally going to Matip, um, to the Matapan Library, even till this last year, to Matapan Library to do some mobilizing with you to, to vote for me. There was kids who looked like me that were getting into, that were getting the police called on them, just for mental health breakdown. So I've been through that struggle at a young age, and I've seen the trauma that police, um, police officers have done in our communities. And I'm thinking about how we can um, take those findings that, that are over the overly amount of funds that police officers get. And put into resources for our communities in terms of education, mental health. Um, and so those are the types of struggles that I've been through. Um, definitely, I'm still going through it right now with um, my mental health and self-care in terms of prioritizing myself um, in some spaces. Cuz before this campaign, I definitely was not, I was on meeting back to back to back. Um, I was trying to always be connected to my community, but I wasn't taking care of myself, and I definitely feel like our community members need to learn that too. Um, but back to the question about struggles, um, just like many members of District Four, Matapan, Dorchester. Some small parts of Jamaica Plain, which is also part of District Four and Grove Hall. A lot of us have been through the struggles. We seen literally, I don't know, I don't wanna say her name cuz I respect her family too. I don't know if they're going through it. But there was a shooting that happened last year, and I lost um, a friend of mine due to that. And they're young too. I played basketball with them growing up, and a lot of folks think that us youngsters, like, we're, we're just outside hanging out and not doing anything um, productive or anything. But we're going through, we're trying to succeed in life. We're trying to get well. We're trying to have a future for ourselves. And that's why we need to reinvest into our youth, into their futures too. And that's why I'm saying we need to fully fund our education and the resources that we have in our community. Get us jobs. Um, if you want us to be doing productive types of works, put more funding into our, um, the youth and jobs employment. And so that's why I'm saying, like, youth, especially youth in my age, we're, we're going through stuff, especially with our mental health. That's a big priority, and I've always wanted to center our campaign around mental health and wellness and making sure even at schools. Cuz COVID has done some things to us. Um, definitely for the domestic violence um, survivors. That's been a, a big part of our campaign too, and thinking about them in terms of how we create our, our future platforms too. Um, but that's what I'm saying for the struggles, like, us, you don't know what's going on in their homes. You don't know what's going on with their friends. If they're trying to keep their friends safe, their homies safe, cuz I've had those, those experiences and realized that experiences, my family still don't even know that. But realized to death, death experience, but I'm still here and I'm still happy that I'm here. Um, that's also one of the reasons why I ran, cuz I was like, yo, God, you tested my waters or something, like you want me to be here for some reason. And I'm glad that I'm still alive today. I'm glad that our ancestors fought hard for us to make sure that we have a future. And those are the types of struggles that I've been through, and I know I share those experiences with residents of District Four, with having to lose their family members to the carceral state that we have right now, and I wanna make sure that we're always gonna help them.
Alright.
Ooh, that was a little long, my bad.
No, 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 this is your platform, Nikia Jean. No, 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 this is your platform, the Kia Jean.
Thank you.
Charles is how we say it, but the truth is, I even said John wrong. Because it's the, it's a si- it's like a smooth J.
Yeah.
John, Jean Charles, right?
Jean.
Yeah, Jean. Alright, so uh and we we we're talking to her, she's eighteen years old, running for District Four. Do you have, the things that you're talking about, they're legitimate? And what I'm hearing from you, these are the things that older people. Well, they'll say a few words here and there about it, but you went into depth about exactly how it, how you feel about it, it's almost like. Like you're testifying, you had a testimony about it, whereas someone else claiming to represent you. The youth are going through this and the youth are going through that and they leave and go to the Franklin Park Golf Course and it's the end of it. And uh then of course, there's no representation, like, yeah, you're black. But now you're saying our age group is not being represented. That it's not being represented because those eight, those under eighteen who can't vo- vote really probably don't matter to some people. Not saying that that's how they feel, the other people, the ones in in office and the ones running. But do you think that's probably why they don't focus on the youth under eighteen?
Right, no, primarily because they also bring a part of the voting situation, but I've always wanted to um. Basically push for our voting age to be lower, at least by sixteen, folks should be able to vote. And I think that's why I feel a lot of folks look over um hearing youth voices and inviting them to their, to these spaces. Cuz we're definitely need them, our future depends on the decisions that they're always making. And so that's why I'm like, yo, bring the youth here. Where are they? I always walk into spaces and I'm like, um. Okay, only little black girl or whatever. Um and so that's why I've always been like, yo, there needs to be more youth spaces, cuz then. Some folks bring us for a photo op and I hate those situations, I just lock up the Zoom. Yeah, we like, a lot of youth, including myself, we log out of Zooms, especially when we're called just for photo ops, just to hear, oh, let's.
Photo op in a Zoom?
Cuz you know how sometimes you could take the picture after Zoom of like everybody who's been in the room?
Oh, alright, well, I'm just letting you know, I'm gonna take the picture.
Oh, no, you're good, you're actually making, this is what I mean by actually calling you to be, to be in their space and then to have their voices heard. Cuz people are like, oh, let's get youth leaders. Where where is, where are they then? Where are they? Um and when.
Where were they, where were they?
Right, have, did you do outreach in terms of trying to get them there? Are you paying them for their time? Are you asking them any questions that? They would be actually listened to about in terms of their demands? Um cuz youth do not like wasting our time. There, we have a future ahead of us, so time is.
Y'all got things to do.
Yeah, we got things to do, people always say that we don't got um things to do, but we do got things to do.
Things to do, I mean, you got school, then you got after school curriculum, you got all kind of stuff going on.
Right.
Now, but but you, you got a whole lot more going on. So, okay, I I didn't know that there was such thing as a Zoom, now I see why. Oh, that's why you see those little things with all those little heads on. And they got, everybody doing the same old smiling.
Yeah, but I don't do the Zoom ones, it used to be back when, cuz a lot of youth organizers, right, when they come into organizing spaces, they don't know that they're getting manipulated sometimes. Um cuz some folks, like especially, you'll see some politicians are like, oh, wow, yeah, y'all doing a great job. Thank you for coming here, we'd like y'all to come again, they take the picture and then boom, they call it as if, yeah, we have spaces for you. Um and some, like even myself, I I've been through those situations where we've been used um for the policies or. For just the photo ops again. Um but I definitely, I was aware of that when I started talking to more organizers. Who were a a little bit o- older than me, but they're still part of um the youth category. And then I learned about the manipulation that youth have in terms of organizing and in terms of um not even hearing them when they're being heard. And we've been wasting our times, seeing time and time again what we need and you don't see it happening. So that's why I really ran, cuz like, if I hear you, I'm gonna put it into consideration, talk to other members about it and then we're gonna get it done.
Well, it'd be very nice to have a city council who starts their sentence off with, hey, yo. Because now we know. When you hear that, yo, now we know, you have arrived, hip-hop is in the house.
Right, A A B, definitely, we need to break down away from, I know folks are like, okay, professionalism counts or whatever. But definitely make the space opening for folks to understand the language that's going on. Um and so, we don't even, we still don't even have that many um translators in the room too, so that also becomes a barrier for folks. We need to be accessible at all angles, we need to be speaking the language that we are speaking in the hood, not. Not other language and trying to flip over from where we came from, be real, be who you are, firmly running my campaign on who I am, making sure I'm accessible. And I'm not flipping corners on my generation or anything, um I'll talk in and I'll walk in and say, hey, yo, what's, what I do? Or, hey, how are you? Um either way, they still won't understand me for a fact.
Well, by the way, um congratulations on your, 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 your uh North Carolina phone call.
Oh, you saw that?
And I was like, how did they, what, so cuz I know I tagged her the the day before. It was like, hey, I had some great meetings and I got some more coming up, then all of a sudden, I'm seeing your tag and I'm like, oh, thanks, I said, oh, oh. This is going, this, the next twenty years is on and popping.
Right, even if I weren't not to get elected, I will, let's manifest that. My thing is, we're definitely inspiring the next generation, right? People are, um a lot of generations, sometimes we we get in the midst of, no, this is not gonna happen, changes, the change is not gonna happen. But definitely it's an inspiration of folks and lately I've been seeing, cuz there was a a post, I was like, wow, she inspired me or some, um it was by. What's it called? Block, you know, something with block, um bigger than my block, right? And so basically it was a post about somebody had tagged um tag, tagged the flyer from, not the flyer, the. Article from the Jamaica Plain News and they're like, wow, she's eighteen, she's an inspiration. And I was just like sitting with that, cuz I was like, wow, me and inspiration. Cuz, yo, I just call myself a regular, a regular person, right? All politicians are regular persons and we should see them that way and that's how we should be able to hold them accountable. So.
Okay, well, so one of these uh days when you have time to take a vacation. You should put North Carolina on there, go see homegirl.
Yeah, I'll do, she called me during school, I wasn't able to pick her.
Oh, word?
Yes, probably during school, but I was able to call her back afterwards, I was so happy to talk with her, I was like, wow.
She found your number?
She called me on messages and I was like.
Oh, oh. So, oh, she, I'm gonna tell you right now, she will find you.
Right.
She's the kind of person like, uh-uh, no, I'm calling her right now. And I'm sure you talked to her and you realized this, this, and she wa- she was the youngest. Um who ran and she was the first black person. So she's about to run again, but she's the thing, she won at age twenty-eight, she just turned twenty-nine.
Right.
And um she's like, I'm not going away, this is the community I grew up in, so.
Right, definitely.
And I, I like that, um, okay, let's go back to. The community fridge project, it was called the um. That's what it's called, Mattapan Community Fridge?
Mm-hmm, but on the fridge it says Mattapan Mutual Aid Fridge, cuz I want folks to recognize mutual aid too.
Mutual aid, meaning take some butter, drop some butter off. Did it work? Or was it, was it more so people needing it? Or were were people actually more uh uh open and receptive to saying, I also would love to give, were there a lot of givers?
Yeah, we, no, definitely, some folks may say, cuz it it kinda looks different, we have givers, but then we also have, Mattapan is a community with. Thousands of residents, forty, forty thousand plus residents, forty-four. Um and so you definitely see, cuz our fridge is always going empty. Once folks put it in, in about an hour or two, everything is empty again. So what we're still working on is trying to get more folks to always put stuff in the fridge, but it's definitely a need in the community, when we have our food drives. A lot of folks come out, um they're happy about it, we gotta speak to some of our community members. But in terms of it being sustainable, it's always sustainable for our community members to always come in. I I talked to the guy, um Lonnie's Pizza Shop, I don't know if you've been there on Blue Hill Lab, next to Cafe Juiceup. I was talking to the him the other day when we had our food drive and he was definitely like, you need to put stuff during the nighttime too, cuz there's like. There's folks who come in during the night at like twelve AM or so, teenagers who look like um myself. Young people, cuz you know, some folks can be embarrassed about like going to the fridge and like needing stuff or whatever. They come in the night and they start looking through the fridge too, so I'm like, I need to also make sure that I'm thinking about folks that come through the night. Or that might be younger and wanna have food during that, um instead of only putting it throughout the day. So that's what I'm running a basis on, so it's, the community loves it, it's a fresh new idea for folks in Boston, but it's been happening in New York and Chicago.
That's cool, well, you you do know why it has to have food at night, right?
Yeah.
People get off work.
Right.
And then people, and then people smoke weed.
Oh, my goodness.
And then they get real hungry, yo, what they got in here, what they got in here, yo? Turkey up, it could be a sandwich.
Oh, my goodness.
I'm just saying, that might happen.
Either way, we're feeding the community, that's the number one goal, if you hungry, I'm gonna get some food.
There you go, no shame in your game. That, so now you you got the community, um you 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 joined the uh the Mattapan. Community organization, that's first, then you, wait, did you join that? After the Parkland or before? No, be- before, I mean after, right, the Parkland.
The Parkland was before, yeah.
Okay, so you just wasn't having it, period?
Yeah, no, cuz I was like, I was doing work in the South End, right? And I was like, I'm go- I was going to the state house, I'm always going to do work in. Um in the South End, I'm always going to the city, so City Hall. But I was like, I need to start doing more work in my community, specifically Mattapan, and I was already doing that, I'm meeting with folks and going to meetings too. But I was like, I need to do more work in our communities, more work and be more invested into my community. So that's why I went, I wanted to do the Neighborhood Council and then I wanted to do the Mattapan Community Fridge, cuz there's always more that you can do for our community. No decision or um imagination that you have in mind is not that great, everything is great in turn. And I was really inspired to do the Community Fridge too, because of throughout the summer and like the summers before, I was always teaching youth about. Um the Black Panther Party and, oh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I was always teaching youth about like the Black Panther Party and then the free breakfast programs, so I was like, if I'm teaching, I need to actually put it into action, you can't just talk the talking hand. Walk the walk. And so that's why I was putting into consideration about doing the Mattapan Community Fridge. And making sure there's free food in our, in our communities. And as though some people still look at the Black Panthers like, oh, yeah, that's a, that's a. Not a great topic, but I'm like, yo, they literally did the work, they put it in place and we're appreciating the work that they've done and they set before us. And it's inspiring us now and we're doing it to help our neighbors.
Interesting, I grew up in the party.
You did?
You got, you got your computer, just look up MC Spice and see what my real name is. Yeah, just look, look, look up MC Spice and see what my real name is, my real name is Amir Shakir.
Wow.
There you go, so see, it was, this kid was meant to be, she's looking up like. Okay.
Oh, no, I'm on your, I'm on your LinkedIn.
I sent the bio to Fiona.
Wow.
Everything's on the bio, everything you're saying, when I was seventeen, I was doing the same thing, I just didn't, never ran for any office. I was trying to make sure there was peace in the gang.
Hmm, great, yeah, I'm still looking into that too, of how we can make sure that there's peace in our gangs and use utilizing them in the right way. In order to make our community self-reliant.
Yeah, well, you're you're going to win. Now, let me see, are there any books around you?
There are some books around me.
Right, can you see them right in front of you?
Yeah, I can see them right in front of me.
Arms lift?
Yeah.
Okay, close your eyes and grab a book, don't look at the book, grab a book.
I got one.
Open the book, make sure it ain't upside down. Open it anywhere.
Okay.
There you go, now start reading the second paragraph, the first three sentences.
Okay, in the years after Prince Joan died, I thought often of those who were left to make their lives in the shadow of his death. I thought of his fiance and wondered what it meant to see the future upended with no explanation. I wonder what she would tell his daughter and I wondered how his daughter would imagine her father, when she would miss him, how she would detail the loss.
All right, that's cool, that sounds like some uh novel.
Between the world and me, between the world and me.
Oh, okay, oh, well, here's the old man style, cuz I gotta put on glasses for mine. I'm going into second paragraph, I wanted to show my son the importance of integrity. It's imperative that you carry it out, since it was impossible for him to dance with his injury, I agreed to perform in his place. I had nev- I had never ballroom danced a day in my life and I come from a whole different hip-hop generation. That gives me a totally different fan base, I had to quickly figure out how I could make this work. For us without jeopardizing my already established uh reputation with the hip-hop community. Guaranteed success Percy Miller, are you familiar with who Percy Miller is?
I feel like I hadn't, wait, let me see the picture.
Is, tell me if I can get it.
Oh, Master P?
Ah, there you.
Yeah, no, I definitely heard about him.
I follow just about everything that guy does, cuz I, I like the way he talks and I like the way he talks about business.
The way you said it, oh, wow, no, that guy.
The Kia Jean, the Kia Jean Charles.
Yep.
Um District Four and she's on fire and she's not scared, cuz her ancestors once.
Yep.
Um, all right, here's some more very tough political questions. We know you can read, we already tested you on that. This is the one that asks everybody.
Okay.
Butter pecan ice cream or maple walnut ice cream?
I'm gonna be real with you, I can't eat that cuz I'm lactose intolerant.
As you can see, ladies and gentlemen, she's black. Make some without, without the lactose, which one would you take?
No, 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 I'm not gonna.
Goodness gracious, okay. Well, I ain't gonna try to go there, cuz you know, I I I heard, okay, all right, um you're at Dunkin' Donuts, what do you order?
What do I order? I'm ordering, hmm, let me get some fancy, okay, not fancy. On a regular, if I, if I had, if I stayed up the whole night, I'm gonna probably get. Me a two-for-two or either a two-for-five, yep, we working on the budget, um and I'm also get. I'm also get a French vanilla chai latte with extra vanilla, cuz it's, it do be bitter sometimes, they don't know what they doing sometimes. Um and I'm also get me some hash browns. And one strawberry sprinkled donut and that'll help me throughout the day, I'm not only eating it throughout that time, I'm eating it throughout like the day. Don't tell my teachers though, cuz they don't need to know I have these sneaky foods, everybody do, everybody do, but yeah.
You get your grub on, so you said, don't tell them, so what happens when this video is, is up there and everybody can see it?
I don't go to school, I'm I'm, I mean, I'm in school, but like, I'm not in person. I did virtual school, they can't, they, there's no consequences, there's no detention, um. Yeah, but just don't let the sisters hear about it.
Now, now you mentioned that you go to Cathedral High. Have you ever ordered any food from the pizza shop across the street or more s- more seafood? I I heard more seafood's closed.
Yeah, it's closed, um there's now a pizza shop called Union Park, I loved the pizza shop that was also there beforehand. Every day we'd also go, it was like two for five dollars. They also, they're finally able, this new pizza shop, they also recently made, not recently, but like last year. They made the two for five dollars, I like that too.
It's in the same place?
If, yeah, it's in the same place, it's right next to the fish place too.
Okay, it's just a different name now.
Yeah, it's called Union Park now, in Union Park Pizza, but they, I, they, I, I'm from Boston, I I tried a lot of pizza out. I'm not gonna hold you, this is why I'm lactose intolerant, um and so they, I, but I love the pizza shop that was also there before, so. I can't, I can't, yeah.
It's, it's, it's your birthday and your mom is making your favorite dish, what do you want her to make?
Hmm, she has to make Haitian spaghetti, if you don't make Haitian spaghetti, there's no birthday. Um she also got.
Haitian spaghetti?
Yes, you never. Yes, you never had Haitian spaghetti before?
My mother cooked Haitian food, I never even heard of Haitian spaghetti.
What?
Yeah, Haitian spaghetti.
Yes, it's quick and easy, it, oh my goodness, I can't believe you haven't heard about it, it, oh, you gotta taste it, there's no way.
What's the difference, is it, is it the same as all the other spaghettis, it's just different meats?
No, um, you can either, some people put sausage in it, some people put like actual hot dogs, I don't really eat sausage. Um, I'm fine with the hot dogs though, but in terms of.
Hot dogs is in the spaghetti?
Yep. But it's chopped, it's chopped, chopped. You gotta taste it, don't even play, huh?
Is that called Haitian spaghetti or kitty spaghetti?
No, 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 I don't, I haven't heard about kitty spaghetti, but in terms of the sauce, you got the, all the peppers in there, you got the, oh, I was about to speak Creole for a second. Um, no, but you just gotta taste it, the consistency, the love that they put into it, it's amazing, it's amazing.
I, I'll take some chopped steak in there instead of that, uh.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Spicy, uh, spicy beef sausage, but I, I ain't messing with nobody's hot dog. I mean Chef Boy, those Chef Boy ID got that with the hot dogs in it.
You gotta taste it, you can't judge it right off the bat, you gotta taste it, I can lowkey be. Cuz with my lactose intolerance, I don't really eat that much foods, but if I can eat it, you can definitely eat it, it's gonna taste bomb, if I tell you.
Hershey's with almonds or Hershey's plain?
I can't eat Hershey's, I don't like Hershey's actually.
You don't, you don't wait, you don't eat chocolate?
Um, I eat Kit Kat, but I don't really eat chocolate.
Oh, ladies and gentlemen, I don't know.
No, 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 I can't, I'm lactose intolerant, I get a bad reaction, if you, if any of my friends know, I used to work at Barnes and Nobles last year. One brownie, one tiny little brownie will do me damage, I cannot. And I'm trying to hold a boundary against like my lactose.
So guess what, I'm not even gonna say anything about Chinese food.
I mean, I, I mostly order like American food, I'm not even gonna hold you, I, I order, it's either. How do you call it, I have ate some bomb El Salvadorian food, when I go to Easty, oh my goodness, my friend will take me to. Oh my gosh, every one of them, have you been to Easty before? You've been to Easty?
To the ice cream shop.
So I, I don't know which ice cream shop I'm talking about, but. When I go to Easty, it's a showdown.
That's when you get busy?
Yeah, I get busy over there, yeah.
Okay, um, Coca-Cola or Pepsi?
I don't like either, first of all, Coca-Cola, you know what they did to our people, that was disturbing, I don't, I don't support any of them, um. I'm gonna say that right at the back, I don't like supporting, I don't like supporting organizations that hurt our black and brown people. I don't even wear Victoria's Secret or more like that.
Popeyes or KFC?
You know what KFC did to our people, but I'll take Popeyes, you know what KFC did to our people, I don't.
You gonna be starving, everybody did some to our people.
No, no, if you know me, you know I be buying fast food, I'm not even gonna hold you, even though it's bad, but you know with that budgeting, you know how they framed it, they manipulated us. But I, I do, I do be taking Popeyes, that chicken, that chicken sandwich does smack, it does.
Oh, so you have it sometime, you have it, you had it before?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, um, Harriet Tubman on a twenty dollar bill, what does that mean to you?
What does it mean to me?
Didn't mean anything to us?
There's a better way to, there's a better way to appreciate Harriet Tubman than more, than putting her on the Tonya Bill. Instead of putting her on the Tonya Bill, you could have created more schools under her name, you could have done more stuff in terms of ending white supremacy for our community members. Um, but you wanna put her, you can put her face on a bill, what is that gonna do for, you're just passing around this bill, right? You think you care for a second, right, but in terms of actually appreciating the work that she done, especially for black and brown folks. Do more work that's gonna help black and brown folks, if you put money, if you put somebody's face on a dollar bill. What is that just gonna, it's just gonna be there, to be honest with you, it's not really helping folks on a day-to-day lives. In terms of helping that mother who's trying to, um, get her kids to have clothes and have clothes on their back or trying to get food to the table. It's not really helping her like that, in terms of, um, appreciating Harriet Tubman, the work she's done. Do something else in terms of putting, instead of putting her on the dollar bill.
Okay.
Appreciate her legacy, yeah.
Well, at the age that you started, I can see a legacy in you, and I can see there definitely will be a school in your name. I, 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 I can definitely see that happening, um, my question to you before we leave is. Can we count on being able to speak to you again in the future, very near future, cuz. We don't wanna be like the, anybody else.
Oh, yeah, call me, I would, I was about to say my number, I can't remember my Google Voice number by the, at the top of my head, but I was about to put my number out here.
Yeah, give it to Fiona and tell her to text me.
Yeah, okay, word, yeah, I'm just, way, not gonna hold you, I can be back in terms of texting phones back, but if you call me, I will call you back.
Yeah, cuz, cuz I don't want you to have something new on the, you know, to, to discuss with the people. But not have a platform to bring it to, as you, as you can see, this, this platform is safe.
Mm-hmm.
If I was talking to Donald Trump, I don't have anything to say about. Uh, I don't have any fiery darts to throw, I just have the regular questions, like, I found out he likes steak, uh, he likes his steak with ketchup. I wanna talk about that, everything else, there are enough newspapers to talk the other way.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean, we want the people to get to know you.
Right.
You know what I mean, so if somebody wants to buy you a coffee, they know how to make, they know, they know what to order you now.
Yep, they know what to order me.
There it is, she just don't want the Coca-Cola Pepsi and, uh, but, once in a while, she'll take this, this sandwich from Popeyes.
Yeah, yeah. Definitely will.
Yep, so I really, really appreciate the, uh, the interview, and again, I, I really hope that I were able to talk to you very soon.
Same here, same here, I love to having a conversation with you, wishing you the best, you know what I mean?
Okay, God bless.
You too, have a good one, bye.